Okay, we'll call this meeting in order. Start with the, uh, the delegates.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, approval of agenda. I'd like to, I'd like to add, um, committees and board reports, I'd like to add D., update on the Bartlett Bridge replacement. Anybody have anything else?
Um, I don't know if you want me to put this under public forum, I just wanted to make aware nomination papers. Uh, or would you rather have it under committees and boards, or?
Um...
Other, other, whatever's good.
Yeah, I mean, it really doesn't matter, we can talk about it at other.
Other?
Yeah, sure.
That's it? Can I make a motion to approve the warrant as amended?
Second.
Motion seconded, all those in favor? Okay, uh, my next item is a public forum. This is where, um, anybody from the public, uh, have any comment on any non-agenda items? Now is your time. Any comments from the public? Okay. Approval of the minutes of February 23rd, 2015.
I didn't see anything, so I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion, where are your second? Second. All those in favor? Okay, committee and board reports. Planning board meeting Thursday, 3:12, um, at the Mildred Day Library School here, 7:00 P.M. There'll be a joint meeting with the budget board Wednesday, 3:19, at the Mildred Day Library School, that's the selectmen and the budget board. Um, on March-
It's gonna be in the gym, too, Dan.
In the gym?
Yeah, we got, we got acceptance today.
Yeah, I see.
We'll, we'll square up some tables in the corner and, um... We had a choice of trying to go in the little conference room, but with two boards and, and people, I mean, you know, a few people here to present.
Yeah.
Is that all right?
Good.
Yeah.
Okay, um, on March 12th, there'll be a manager's search committee meeting. This is with the, uh, the selectmen and the search committee.
You're gonna be able to get in, all right?
Yeah, we're gonna do it over here, not the town hall, right? Or at the town hall, where are we gonna do that?
I thought you were gonna be upstairs.
So we're gonna do it over?
Over here.
Over here.
Oh.
Didn't actually suggest it's on.
Yeah, it's easier than- I'll have to put in a request, okay, so you want it in the conference room? Yeah.
Uh, I got a little, uh, check on it, takes, takes a little while to get, get approved of.
Okay, well, if you can-
First thing in the morning, I can email everybody, say, it's a town hall.
Okay.
Okay, you can get in the town hall.
Yeah.
It's just easier here than going up and down those stairs from the town hall.
Hey, I, I, you're right. I'm with you.
Yeah.
And we're posting those, right?
Um, you're gonna post them?
Yeah, okay. The search committee needs them.
I haven't, or sort of-
No, but I can.
Yeah, I'll get all the, it's only an executive session.
Executive session to, to review resumes.
And then, uh, the last item on committee and board reports is the Bartlett Bridge. I attended the meeting, uh, on March 5th. Basically, it was just kind of a preliminary meeting. Uh, they were asking for input on, you know, what types of, uh, closures, one lane, you know, full closure, you know, for six-month period with detours around, and there was definitely some strong opposition from the Kennamont folks, uh, for detours, I guess they're gonna be doing some work down over at Dock Square, or in that general area also. Um, so, you know, they're looking, they're trying to figure out, you know, what they're gonna do, whether they're gonna, move it over on one side, do one lane on one side, and do the, one lane on the other side, and so they're still looking at that stuff. And, uh, this will be like about a six-month project, six to eight-month project. Right now, they budgeted 2.3 million for engineering work. They plan on advertising in February of 2016, with, uh, you know, construction in 2016. Um, the only other thing that came out of it was, you know, Barry asked about, uh, maybe putting some conduits or something in the bridge in case we ever decide on keep doing some riding. There was some discussion, day or on Monday, there was some discussion on, um, maybe making sure that the bridge is wide enough in case, I think Kennamont gets working on that part of Route 1, and they're, they're doing some sidewalks, and they're, you know, with a possibility of maybe putting some sidewalks on that bridge. And then, there was also a little bit of a discussion on, in case we ever do sewer, making provisions to get the sewer across, so that's all kind of preliminary stuff. Uh, they took down, you know, a bunch of notes, and we'll be setting up another meeting probably soon here, so... Pretty much, I think we got our, Roger was there, Terry was there, and, uh, Renault was there for my part. That's it for that. Managers report.
Uh, I've got, just a few things, just to keep you up to date. Um, I talked either at the budget meeting or selectman's meeting last time, about, uh, some questions regarding the sheriff's office billing for this, for the, um, sheriff's office, uh, police protection for the year. I have talked to the sheriff, I mean, and we're reviewing that document. Uh, we have identified what the issue is. And the, to make a long story short, in the past, the contracts with municipalities or private, you know, towns, um, were always based on entry-level, uh, offices, okay? So, base paying, uh, for, because many times you didn't know who, who the officer was gonna be. In some cases, as you know, they hire officers for the contract. Uh, in this case, that's what happened to you. In the past, this new sheriff came in and, um, corrected the contracts to indicate what the salary outlined was for the actual officer working under that contract. So it became like the officer's personal union contract salary. I understood that. Apparently, other people have called the sheriff, uh, 'cause I wasn't the first. And, uh, I said, "We need to know that upfront, we can't," you know, after the fact isn't gonna work for me. So we have, he's gonna review that old practice, uh, and we're gonna get back together and discuss that. Again, my argument is, if there's gonna be a change in the billing practices, you need to let us know at budget time and not, you know, and not after we've, we've budgeted and sent the bill. I'm, I get the feeling it'll probably get resolved, talked to Todd about it as well. But it isn't resolved exactly, but I, I did want you to know. The warrants tonight, I'm gonna invoice it tonight. I agreed to pay half the bill, which is pretty typical anyway. I mean, we, we know we're gonna pay, you know, and the reason I did that is so that the, when we can resolve the rest of it, I'll have to make an adjustment or whatever. So, the sheriff was fine with that, very cooperative. Uh, said, "You try to work with us on it, and I'll keep you in," that's it, too. Come over here.
So we budgeted, we budgeted for a certain amount, and now, and we're getting charged more than that?
Nine thousand dollars, more than what we budgeted.
Right.
Okay.
Well, we budgeted for that, um, yeah, maybe you said it and I didn't pick up on it, but we budgeted that amount based on what they told us.
Correct.
With a signed contract, was it?
No.
Not with figures in it?
No.
That needs to be approved, I think.
I mean, I'm certainly for the fire, the, I mean, the police protection, but you just wanna make sure that we know what we're paying for here, you know?
And I, you know, from a management point of view, if I came into a, you know, to a setting and saw that that was happening, and, you know, throughout the county in two or three different locations, I would certainly wanna correct it, make a recommendation, instead of the S.O. taking, you know, somewhere to go lost. Now, you, I, I use that word carefully, because the contract is very, very extensive. And, um, there's a lot of line ends to that contract. So, there's, I gotta say this politely, I mean, there's not a lot of sympathy, uh, out of my soul for, uh, a year of making an adjustment if they have to, okay? So, we'll, we'll, we'll keep working at it, and, uh, I think honestly that the contract in the future should have a dollar sign in it that, you know, we can budget for and be held to. And one of the exercises that I wanna go through with him for budget purposes is to do that.
So we'll, we'll see that, didn't we?
Yeah, I have to say it was a good, positive conversation, but not, you know, no discord whatsoever, but nevertheless, it, it's a little bit of a kicking the pants, you know?
Well, it's a different administration, too, because we started off a little-
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
A different sheriff.
On the ambulance purchase, we're moving forward with that. We're bringing different chassis in, different samples in, different, uh, demos in. Uh, we looked at one last week, uh, we had it for the day, we have another one coming in next week. So we're moving in that direction, uh, just so that you know. Uh, basically contacting, you know, the ambulance providers in the, you know, in the northeast part of the country and saying, "Hey, if you got a demo, bring it up, I'd like to look at it."
So how's the support been from the, from the fire station on that?
Good.
And, yeah, they're okay with not specializing?
I have not heard any negative responses. If, if a demo, we talked about this, the chief and I and assistant chief, and I think a couple of the guys that were in that day the demo came in. You know, and I'll, I'll just be silly for a minute, but if there's an ambulance demo that comes in, that's, you know, got a price tag on it, and it, you know, and it doesn't have a, a light in the back, we can put a light in the back, you know what I mean, and, and get that, uh, charge added to the demo cost. I mean, you can still add a particular to it if you need to. Uh, it's not stock-built, but it doesn't mean that you have to go without it, just because it's a demo. If you need a light, you, you light in something. So, we, we have some flexibility, but I just wanted you to know that we've taken that pathway.
Good.
And, uh, you know, they bring them in, it's, you know, kinda nice to see them hands-on, and, uh, so that's, that's the way we're working on right now.
Yeah, I have a question on that.
Sure.
Who does the repairs on our ambulance that needs repairs? Does the town garage do repairs if the ambulance needs repairs?
Yes.
Um, I'm thinking if you bring in a demo, that you're looking at, seriously looking at a demo, you might wanna ask the mechanic about that-
We have.
-brand or whatever, and, um, because you might get, um, you might find one that's perfect, and the mechanic might realize that, that that unit or that brand or whatever has more problems than it's worth.
Exactly, particularly in the engine department, the chassis department, not so much in the box. Cause, I mean, although, box, uh, the box is specialty unit, but the chassis, you know, is, is a definite raw chassis, either Chevy or Ford or whatever, and you're right. And certain motors have had histories, as you know, and I could tell you that.
Rogers should have some input.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, Roger and I have been talking about it, and, uh, but that's a good suggestion, and, but, uh, you know, it's a team effort, hopefully. You know, the firemen can, certainly have the input on the specialization of things and what they want. Now, you also understand that we have lots of firemen, lots of, lots of people who have lots of opinions.
Yeah.
And if you have lots of people that, you know, that are here on a short-term basis, the opinions are quite, quite readily available.
Yeah.
As I have found out, you know? Pine Tree Waste, I talked a little bit about recycling, uh, and I've continued to work with them. This is not a crisis that, that's gonna, you know, we have to deal with it head-on right this very minute. I wasn't sure about that in the initial conversation. It was like, "Oh, you know, this is like right in front of me right now," and it, it isn't. But I've asked Pine Tree to draft up a, you know, a, a potential extension contract that we can look at. And they're doing it, and we're working together on it, and... Basically, the ingredient of that contract, and this is just global, would be basically the same with, with just a, a temporary escalation clause on, on recycling. So if recycling does become a cost, you know, we would, we would pay a little towards that, and if it drops off, it doesn't, it would de-escalate, so we wouldn't be locked in. It would be sort of a floating number with a ceiling, okay? Uh, again, we're, we're talking about $6,000 at this point of added costs with our tonnage the way it is. I think the point to remember is, right now, recycling is, is costing people to process. And he, he's a great guy to work with, and very laid-back about it. He said, "Yep, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about it, we'll look at it, and I'll, you know, hopefully have something that you can, you can look at, too," okay? That, uh, Dana's contribution land park, I don't know what you call it at this point, but we do have a committee together. Uh, there's a meeting scheduled, we've invited, uh, is it a thump? Okay, yeah, the first group, yeah, to be on that committee. Jen's, we better move together on this and on it, you know, at least for a while, and, uh, we're moving forward with, with that suggestion that you folks came up with.
Who's on, who's on the committee, Jeff?
Uh, Ted, Jim, me, Rick, Dana, obviously.
Roger, I think that's Roger.
Roger, yeah, Roger, 'cause of, 'cause of the impact, yeah. Yeah, he was reluctant, but we talked to him. He said it wasn't an option, yeah. I think that's the bulk of it, Dan.
Good.
Okay. Uh, we haven't met yet, but there's a meeting scheduled, and I'm not sure if it's the end of this week or next week. I don't know if you folks have the same sense of humor, I do, probably not, but I don't know if you noticed the budget committee minutes, 'cause, 'cause, uh, Simone said, "You're gonna take minutes at this budget, but I should draw," I think. So I, I gave her the minutes the next morning, and it was probably a total of 50 words, you know? Opened up the meeting, and, you know, did this, reviewed the budgets. And then Jim, and John Bell said his, said his minutes out was 36 pages. And I said, "Wait a minute, how is that at the same meeting?"
Still asleep before I even-
Apparently, apparently, I, I-
Well, I think John captured it well, because Jason was looking for some stuff, and I was gonna scan a whole bunch of stuff and send it to-
Oh, took care of it.
But John took care of it, so-
I was gonna do the same thing, you're right.
Good.
I, I said to that, I said to Simone, "Uh..." They're great, but it made my 50 words, you know, a little shaky, you know?
He's very thorough.
Anyway, that's all I have, I thank you.
I didn't see him take any notes, that was a good-
I know, that, when I saw that, I'm like, "Jeez, I didn't see him writing it."
I thought I did an accurate job, you know?
With a phone or something?
I could do this now, too, if you want. I don't know why I put names on these folders, it was just probably because I had to keep track of how many I did, but they're all the same. I don't want you to think you're getting something special. And I'll put that location, I'll pick up this stuff at, at the end. So, thank you. What, what this is, is, this is the latest and hot-off-the-press, um, information on the RSU 21 construction project. And I'm not gonna redish it, you can go through it yourself, but just quickly go through the papers so you know what's there. There's a note from Kevin, I've been talking to Dr. Crowley about the project, as you would expect. Uh, there's a Dave Friend's letter that kinda introduces the project, it's frequently asked questions, uh, nicely done, and, uh, there's a total, uh, project budget for this construction project. There's RSU building renovation facts, um, so more or less details of... And then there are four, uh, plans, uh, building plans, uh, of the projects. One, the reason they're four is there's upper floor and lower floor of the, uh, of the high school, Kennamont Fort and the day school. Then, uh, there's a bunch of papers that, uh, copies of correspondence are going back and forth with legislators and on that, on that special bond work that they're looking at. Uh, Tom, you made reference to it, I think, not too long ago. Um, they're looking to, to get legislative help on, uh, the way the bonds are handled, and it's interesting. And I just thought you might like to follow that, that, that discussion that they're having on that with the different people. And then the last document is the up-to-date engineering report on this building itself. And it's, it indicates what the problems are with, um, with this particular building. And that's, that report is, is new. It's, it's, what's the date on it, Tom, I don't have my-
January 13th.
Right.
This year.
Uh, within a month, okay, I think, okay? So, um, I, I, I thought it might be of interest to you to have all the latest information. Uh, I don't know if this is a good thing or a bad thing, but I also made the same package for the budget committee, just thinking it might be useful information for them down the road as well, and I guess knowledge is, you know, part of understanding, and, uh, I will give them out, you know, when we have a budget meeting. But Dr. Crowley indicated that he would come and, uh, talk about this, go through this. Uh, and I said, "Let me think about it a little bit if I can," and then I thought, well, if we did that, and had him come and go through it, which would be a service, we oughta do it at a budget meeting when we have both groups, you know, and he can have, you know, both the budget committee audience and you as well. I don't know what you need to know, what you want to know.
Well, I, I haven't been able to attend any of the RSU meetings in a while, but most of them, they were staying nights as hours, but have they, you know, if they're talking about doing any type of public, public meetings to go over? I mean, I don't-
I think there's memo there.
Yeah.
Did they?
Memo says it's ER.
Yeah, they will.
Yeah, an email in front, first of all?
I think what Kevin is offered, Dr. Crowley's offered, is to personalize a little bit and, you know, and, and come directly, you know, to talk to you about it. That's, that's a nice service if you need it, if you want. And, uh, like I said, maybe a joint budget meeting or something, you could do that down the road.
Kevin's gonna be back here as principal in September.
Yeah.
She's already said that.
Yeah. Good guy to work with, I mean, I'm not showing my prejudice, and he's a good communicator and good, good, good passing, you know? We worked on this project, you know, last month together, last three weeks together, uh, if, uh... Anyway, you, you've got the latest information on it.
Yeah, the engineers right now, they're, the RSU is spending money that it know it need, knows it needs to spend for the engineers to come in here, probably, maybe not so much now, although, um, with the, with now the frost going out of the ground and everything, they may still be doing it to check the, the ceiling and the beams in the gym and that wing, um, the library here. Uh, over the course of the winter, I understand they have, they did something in the gym to reinforce those beams.
Plated up and-
Yeah, because they found that it was, it was, it was moving more, um, to keep it safe, so...
So, comments from the board, you think that, uh, you know, we, we want Kevin to sit down and go over, or wait for the public hearings, or?
Why don't we get a sense of the two boards when we're together and see what everybody thinks about that?
Yeah, yeah, remind me, and I'll bring it up when we can get together tonight, Chief. The meantime, I thought this might be, you know, good information to have, kicking around. Part of the problem with a lot of these issues like that is, is that you get bad information, or you don't get, you know, the accurate information, and that's where things start to fester, and, you know, and, and you can, you have a little resource of your own and say, "No, I, you know, you know, this is what that means." That's it, thank you.
Okay, new business. Ambulance billing rates.
Well, Chief was gonna be here tonight, and, uh, late this afternoon, his wife came down on matter of fact, she's gonna be hospitalized, so he... But I didn't do this, I think, because he and I went over it in, in pretty good detail. It's pretty simple, we're recommending that the rates remain the same, all right? And this, I, I don't have copies, and I'm not gonna pass it around. That's, that's the current rates, um, that we have. That's a far cry from what the company recommends, but remember, they're, they're recommending it on a national basis, you know? And, uh, the chief feels that our rates are, uh, are reasonable. Our rate of recovery is good, very good, and, uh, you know, for, and as we're to and would, sometimes you raise the rates, they'll give it, you know? And, uh, where at the medic, medic is gonna pay flat rate, any, any, as you know. So, um, the chief's recommendation would have been to you tonight, you know, that he recommends you to maintain the same rates.
Are these rates comparable with the surrounding town?
Yes, he checked. That's one of the little projects that we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, some of the bigger, bigger organizations have a little bit more. You know, we're on the low end, but, uh, we got a great rate, we're, we're over, uh, I think it's 93%, you know? Collection rate, so... Something you can look at.
So, um, are you looking, uh, you looking for a motion tonight to accept the rate?
I think we can, if, I, uh... I know if he was here, this is what he'd recommend, because we, we planned on it.
Think he's comfortable, these rates are not only fair to them, but also covering, especially can our, our expenses.
Yeah, yeah, we're, that's, I, I use the word carefully, but that's an income source, I also know. Some people call it a moneymaker, I try to avoid that word.
So, um, looking for a motion to accept the rates as recommended by the chief?
I make that a motion.
I'll second it.
Motion and second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
I don't authorize a town manager to sign documents for that.
I make that part of my motion.
Okay, liquor license renewal?
Is that done?
Yeah, Dutch Elm.
And I have the enforcement officer's approval and the sheriff's contract, if he's approved on that.
Anybody got any questions, comments on that? All right, obtain a motion to accept.
Move, we accept the request.
Second.
Motion to accept the license renewal for Dutch Elm Golf Course. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Liquor license renewal for Seafood Center.
Uh, this came a little bit later, so I haven't seen Troy, and I forgot to catch Jim this afternoon, but I don't believe there's any issues as far as, it's for malt and wine. If you want me to, if you want to approve it, and then I'll hold attending Jim's authorization, but I don't think there's been any issues. I make a motion to approve attending Jim's and Troy's authorization, or whatever we get from Troy.
I'll second it, too.
Okay, any further discussion on that? All those in favor? Tax acquired property quick claim, coffee map thirty-five watt twenty-two C?
We do have some people here tonight, at least Delman.
That's one.
One. And Simone can explain this better than I, although she has done very well educating me and keeping me up to this. And it's a little quick change in what took place a few weeks ago, so.
It's my understanding that the sale was moving forward, but not quickly enough to avoid the foreclosure process. So they had, they wanted to hold the closing, but at the same time, we're a little intimidated about transferring a property that's tax acquired. So he's brought the check in tonight for the full amount, which is the three thousand five oh four seventy-two as of today. From the title company, which would take care of the taxes for all these and current taxes all the way, which would carry it from June thirtieth of, of this year. So it's paying the April portion as well. But they just wanted to make sure that before they finalize the closing and everything, that you would accept the sale of, back to Jack Coffee for the property. So they can get the title work cleared off. I told them it was ninety-nine point nine percent sure, they usually don't like to hang on to property, but I couldn't, I couldn't guarantee.
Business of real estate.
It's a good idea.
I make a motion that we sign the quick claim and, and get this taken care of.
Did we prepare the Steve or did the title company?
We did. Is there?
Yeah.
You know, most often I don't see the grantee referenced by last name and then first name.
Oh, okay.
But if the title company's happy with that, I don't, I don't care, but usually it's.
Either way.
And you don't want to see it indexed with copies of your first names.
I'll mention it to him. He was filed, but I'll mention it to him, I'm sure.
That's more million, doesn't he probably the registry?
I don't know.
Okay, so we have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'm second.
They have a motion to accept the quick claim. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
It's a good thing.
Thank you.
Everybody wins, right?
It should have never happened, Jack. It was under contract, should have closed in April, personally, this is just a quick slam. The bank, when they refinanced it a few years ago, they took the wrong title, the wrong description for the wrong each house that was next to each other. The Bank of America has taken since April to address the issue and was able to stay. And so Jack Coffee was left not being able to sell his house and pay his tax bill. So.
Someone since April with Bank of America, not bad.
How did you say about that?
I've got some occasions.
It's unbelievable.
Oh, I bet it's. Maybe say art, there's nobody to talk to.
You can try. I contacted four different attorneys, none of them would touch it because of Bank of America. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, next item on the new business is review and sign, sign accounts payable warrant. Does it move?
This should be kicked out somewhere.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Things are going very well, with a team effort, as you know. But making good progress and, and backlog and issues of, you know, getting correct. So we got, we have lots, lots of help and pulled it together as a, as a team, which is, is working out quite well.
Procedures are open, getting that over in the chair.
The last packet, just so that you know, got by me because there were a new person preparing them. So I actually didn't see them until after you signed them, which we've corrected. And I, I did look them over afterwards, so I wanted you to know that. But that, in this, in this repair, I had a good chance to, to screen through them. But just because we changed up, went out of who was doing what, they did realize that had to come to me first, you know? Working out well.
Excellent.
Was this your new email address, Jack, don't you tell us?
No, yeah, I just use the town manager one.
Okay.
Because the one you're using now actually is a personal one.
Okay.
And you see, I decided that note because it's. Seems to be a problem with, with that process, so.
You want to be politically correct, is that what you're saying?
Right.
Sim, you had something?
Yeah. I just wanted to let you know that nomination papers will be available March sixteenth, which is before your next meeting. So I just want to make sure that everybody is aware of that, that they will be available March sixteenth through April twenty-fourth. And then this year, it would be you, Dan, and Phil that are coming up for reelection, if you'd like to take up nomination papers again. RSU director is Susan Sinat Curran, is her term is up. And budget board, it's three-year term, there is no one that has filled that position. Paul Raymond is, has two years left of his term. So that's one position there and there's two more positions for one year because we have, we keep putting the hot, as they come up to fill. So if you know anybody that's interested in running for the budget board, shoe in, but nobody takes out papers, so.
Plus, I have to put them on the roadside or anything like that.
And the only other thing I, I didn't print under other, but under other, I came across this and I hope it's okay with you. I was thinking of maybe asking John Bell to do something up on the website, asking residents for pictures of Arundel, maybe something for our town report book. Maybe with this winter pictures or things of something in the town. So if it's okay with you, I'll ask him to put it on the website and see if anybody wants to, you know, bring forward any pictures or anything like that. And give your notice for the town report for the end. So if anybody has any ideas for dedications, for dedications or anything like that, we'll be starting the process already, so.
I've already started jotting some stuff, I know what's coming, so.
Pictures, where was the highest snowbank? Show pictures of the roof of the school, the snow all the way to the roof. I mean, I actually saw a roadside sign tonight, and I don't think I've seen it all winter.
So does anybody have anything for Wayne?
I've already bothered him.
How are you doing, Wayne? Nice to see you.
You too.
How's everything?
It's Augusta. That's up out there.
I saw you up there the other day, but you were a long ways off and you were in a group, so I didn't.
Transportation.
I didn't, I didn't interrupt you, but I was going to throw something at you, but I figured you're used to that, so, right, right.
You're going to get a little page to paper off while you're at it, yeah.
Speaking of transportation.
Yes.
The state isn't planning on doing Bautlett Bridge and Lanigan Bridge at the same time. I figured, you know.
No, I think Bautlett's going to be done this year.
Sixteen.
Oh, it is sixteen?
Sixteen, yeah. They're advertising February sixteen and for sixteen construction.
When are they doing Lanigan?
Maybe they.
Which one?
Not.
The one in Kenny Bunkport, from Kenny Mike to Kenny Bunkport.
Oh, that, that, that.
There's no date yet.
Yeah, that's a Bautlett's the same time because that's why they didn't want to do the detour.
Yeah, I've already talked to the, I've already talked to the commissioner about that bridge. I says, you know, you got a million people to go across that bridge in summer time, you can, you know? They're already looking at different ways to, they've got a thing called a slip bridge where they build the other bridge right beside it. And they come in and yank the old one out and slide the new one in. And there's a couple of different things. I was up to DOT headquarters talking to the bridge guy and about that, just because it affects everybody down here, no matter what, so. Because their original plan was put a temporary bridge to land it over behind Allison's. And I says, you're temporary bridge, it costs more than your actual bridge replacing. So they're looking at several different things down there, but it's just so much traffic goes across in the summertime that, you know, they just. I just says, you're not going to be able to close that the way you want it, so. And I, I emailed DOT on, because Tom emailed me today about the light at Hill Road. And if Arundel was going to have to pay for it or whatever. I always thought that any state road, they took care of it, but they said that, well, they have said.
Yeah, they had the public here and they backed here, that was one of the questions that I had, who pays for the light? And they said, the, the town does. You guys are requiring, you guys are fixing the road, why does the town have to? And I, I can't remember what the, what the reasoning was at that point. And then Diane Robbins added on with a whole bunch of stuff, I don't remember what.
They installed the poles, they installed the poles and all the poles, but we, we gave the lights and maintained them.
We do it down on Route one now.
Oh, you do, do the ones.
With liver chrome?
Yeah. That's what I was going to ask, if you had to do that.
They do campground road, we do liver chrome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
For one, both of them.
I mean, that doesn't make any sense, they should, they should do all of them.
I'll check.
Okay.
Interesting, on what basis they want it, yeah.
I know. Well, I, I, after your, after your email, I kind of felt bad, I says, well, I've heard since for the last fifteen years that we wanted to fix Hill Road and put a light there. And now that I've talked him into putting a light there. So, but I'll follow up.
Okay, thanks, appreciate it.
Do you want me to go over anything on the budget or any of what we have now or? Not even attempted to.
How much it's going to cost us, I should. Why have you?
Nothing's passed, it's so far away from anything being done. What I told, I went to Lyman last Thursday and I was just left Dayton. If it passes the way it is right today, the way it was submitted, you're going to receive revenue sharing this year, the same as you did last year. Which I think Arundel got a hundred and fifty-eight thousand or something like that from last year. And that's how it's set today. There's a lot of fight on revenue sharing, there's a lot of fight on the homestead, you know, on different things like that. If, like I said, if it stays the way it is, like on homestead, for seniors it doubles, but it's fully funded. Right now, all of homestead, the town's going to cover half. So the town does, the town doesn't have to cover half anymore. So I mean, as far as town budget goes, you don't have to allocate or change your mill rate or however, the town does that whole, that portion. But that was going, that was a fight right up, right up front, because that's really a direct cost on property tax. The argument is that on the income tax side, and this is how the governor's selling it, is like, for example, Arundel's losing a hundred and fifty-eight thousand this year on revenue sharing. When the tax cuts go into effect, the townspeople of Arundel are going to save, I think it's like one point one million in income tax, about a twenty-five percent cut in income tax. Going from seven point nine five down to seven, five point seven five. So that's the justification on the changes. But I, I, I said it, one of the meetings, I says, the problem is on the, on the homestead side is you're directly changing prop, that's a direct increase in property tax. And you said you don't want to do that, so, you know, it's.
Lots of revenue will be too.
Same thing.
Right, right, so, you know, I, I mean, so that's the, that's the justification, you know, for it, is the, the cut in income tax. Personally, myself, I've always thought, if I would just soon not send any money to the state and send it all to the town. You know, so if, so like in this justification, if everything is average, is you, you send a thousand dollars or eleven hundred dollars to the state. And we're not going to get a hundred and fifty dollars back. So it's, it's one of those things that, you know, philosophy wise, you know, I've always said I'd rather pay no state income tax. And I could pay almost double property tax. So it's more direct impact and citizens can come and talk to you and have a lot more influence on budgets and what they want to do and what it would cost. But there's just, there's just a real big fight on all sides. I mean, the governor's getting a big pushback from Republicans because of, you know, the whole thing. I mean, the whole.
But you're not really Republican unless you're.
Yeah, well, I guess I'm not, but I heard that.
Did you hear that this week?
After spending two hours explaining all the whole thing to Lyman, I was glad to hear that I was a Republican.
You have to figure out what you are, Wayne, that's all it is.
But the, you know, it's just, it's, it's one of those things that I understand the reasonings, the overall goal. You want to try to attract more business if they're going to have it, you know, so income tax always comes in for business owners. So that's the thought process, if you can get the income tax down, then we're competitive with other states. By changing, by increasing the sales tax, you put more of a burden on tourists. So, and there's one thing that Velma's mentioned to me a whole bunch of times on meals and lodging, and he cut the meals tax. So that just made zero sense to me. I mean, it's a tax that, I don't want to talk to everybody, but nobody cares about the meals tax. It's a discretionary tax, you know, so, I mean, I, my first thought was you increase that one more and cut that, you know, on other ones.
Who's not going to come to the state and make the payment?
Well, that's right.
Buck to a meal.
Well, that's right, you know, and, and, I mean, that's the argument though, that I get all the time from main tourism. Is that we can't raise the meals and lodging because people won't come. And I said, do you not go to throughout the country? I mean, I think Las Vegas is what, eighteen percent or something like that, I think.
And Florida is. The chair.
That's why I'm regarding.
Nobody looks, that's right, you know, so I mean, that's one of those things that, I mean, I agree with the idea of shifting as much. We've done it on the term pipe. I mean, we changed on the term pipe, we, when they changed the increase at New York last, two years ago or three years ago. We've gone and changed the easy path deduction system that the credits the Mainers get. We've gone from fifty-three percent out-of-state paying term pipe to sixty-eight percent. So it's gone because of that increase of a dollar there, plus out-of-state people don't get the discount unless they buy a main easy pass separate. So I mean, like for me, I put my tech app that I use, that I used to have a commercial account with on my personal plan because it ends up being free. Because I literally make the fifty percent discount every month. So by putting that on there, I automatically get the fifty percent discount. So it's literally my pickup's free on the term pipe. You know, so it, there's, there's been a lot of benefits there, but that's the shifting, you know, to more of the out-of-state. And, and you're right, nobody, everybody's still going to come to Maine if it's six percent, eight percent, or ten percent. So, you know, I mean, that was, the first couple of things was the meals when I saw the plan. And then was the homestead. And, and that changed because I kind of, you know, kind of figuring out the in-betweens. And revenue sharing is always an issue, but it's been a problem for a long time, that the towns have never known what they were going to get. And, and I mean, if we get a big enough income tax cut, people can pay an extra hundred or two hundred to the town. You know, so it's just figuring out that if it's.
You know, maybe it's in terms of, but philosophically standpoint, I mean, you reduce the income tax so that some people now are not going to pay for the services that they're going to want from their community. They don't have to anymore, because they're, they're not property tax owners. So only the property tax owners are now going to pay for those services.
And, and my concern too is, is the area. I mean, you take a coastal town who has million-dollar properties and businesses and everything, Booth Bay Harbor, you know, Bar Harbor, places like that.
Kenny Bunkport.
You know, our neighbors, yet at the same time, you take people up in Arusta County who do not have this income. Their, their school systems, everything is very dependent on, you know, and the inequality, I think, is going to hit home. Just like, you know, I think New Hampshire has that with a lot of their school districts. And, and that's my concern, is you're taking something that can be shared a little bit more.
Yeah, but, but on schools, it's like you have, I mean, it.
They're not funding them.
They're not funding them.
The state, the state pays forty-nine or fifty-two or whatever the number is right now. But the thing is, that's not fifty, whatever, fifty-five percent if they fully funded it of every town. You have towns like Kennybunkport, wouldn't, it doesn't get any. And then you have towns in Arusta County that get eighty or ninety percent. So, that's where that difference, you know, as far as schools goes.
But they need it.
No, absolutely. No, but absolutely. But I mean, so you, you, it's not like they're funding it the same like we get, I think, what, forty percent or something like that.
And I still think that sales tax is gonna hit the middle guy again.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah. But middle, the, the middle income is gonna save the money on income tax. The lower income people are gonna get a sales tax credit. So, the lower income people, they're gonna get as part of this plan if it goes, like I said, up, this is all prepped on what it is today, which it's always gonna change maybe a lot. Because the problem is too, is once you start changing too many of the parts, the other parts don't work. So, that's the, that's the.
Lots of moving parts here.
Right, oh yeah, there's lots, tons of moving parts.
So, if you have someone who is, they, they do own their own little piece of property, maybe it's a small house. And, but they're low income enough that they actually maybe don't pay main income tax. They don't pay an income tax, but you'd increase their sales tax, are you still going to give them an income tax credit when they don't pay anything in the first place? Because their taxes are gonna go up.
If their, if their income is that low, because what's gonna happen too is, is the, their standard deduction goes up in Maine. It's gonna like double from where it is now.
Yeah.
So, you're gonna have more people that won't have to pay any income tax. But if they're that low, they're gonna probably qualify for the property tax fairness credit, which is like the old circuit breaker.
Yeah.
Which that's gonna go up for under sixty-five, that goes up to a thousand, which is six hundred now. And for over sixty-five, that goes up to fifteen hundred and it's nine hundred now for low income on property, for property owners. And, and over sixty-five gets twenty thousand of homestead, which is fully funded so the town doesn't have to cover the five thousand that they have to now on everybody.
So, it's. They still need to.
There's way, there's a. There's way too many moving parts on how it's all gonna, but it's, like I said, if it passes this year as far as, as of revenue sharing, it's set so that you'll get what you got last year. So, it may all blow up and then who knows what it's gonna end up being.
Wayne, what's he gonna do with second homes? People have cancer and stuff like that. Is he planning on doing anything there?
Well, they wouldn't qualify for any of the.
You know, but is he, is he gonna put on a special tax because someone owns shorefront property or, or a second property?
Um, I don't know if they, it wouldn't be an additional because they would already pay the regular mill rate of property tax.
I thought you were saying where he wanted to do something that people had second homes or something, no?
Yeah.
I haven't seen that one.
I mean, the big.
I don't know how they do that.
The mid-tax break things too though is like all military pensions are non-taxable. And there's a phase in on regular pensions up to thirty-five thousand for seniors. And that's over a five year and has something to do with some federal law that they can't do it right away.
How well's the governor? Has he taken care of himself?
I don't know.
Well, if he needs an ambulance, our rate's the same.
Fees, fees paying will triple our rate.
No, 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 this, this is our rate. Can you turn the camera off?
Need a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn. May I have a second? Seconds at seven fifty-six P M. All those in favor? Motion carries.